Jesus.
Good morning and welcome to the October eighth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilmember Haney, followed by the pledge. You'll please stand.
Please pray with me. Lord, we pray for your blessings over this gathering this morning. Bless the work that we do. And I pray that all that we do glorifies you in your kingdom. Be with those first responders that put their lives on the line to keep us safe and protect us. Lord, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we should have waited for council to get here before we started. All right, we got the minutes from August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five?
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Hawkins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for one award. All right, we have one award for the Bring Your Baby to Work program. And what they do is they bring their baby to work, and many of you have heard me say this over and over, but people bring their baby to work for a six-month period. And when they have to go to a meeting or whatever, they leave their baby in their office, and they don't leave the baby unattended. They leave the baby with their coworkers. And the coworkers, you know, feed them, play with them, change their diaper, whatever they need to do. And so it's been a very successful program. And we'd love it if more men would get involved with the program if they haven't yet. But we have a graduate today, Natalia Hurtado, six months. And here she is to accept her recognition. Come on up. We hold there for a second. Okay, as is customary, I make an attempt to hold the child. You want her back? Yeah, better than that, not instead of her. Picture before council started for the next agenda item, which is certificate of achievement for planning excellence from the American Planning Association. So Kyle, take it away.
Sir, good morning, Mayor and Council. Kyle Akima, Planning Director. So this is a request that the city council accept the recognition from the American Planning Association Texas chapter. It's for the Planning Excellence Program. This is the eleventh year that the city has, or eleventh consecutive year that the city has received this recognition. And some of this has to do with having trained and qualified staff as well as training our appointed officials, our planning commissioners who are here today. And also commitment by the city to adopt and implement plans throughout the city. And for that reason, I also do have the, on the screen here, our Tyler Tomorrow Conference and Plan. We are undertaking the twenty-year update to that, or to the city's twenty-year plan. And so if anybody wants some information on that, they can go to Tyler Tomorrow and learn more about how to get involved and how to provide feedback to the city for that twenty-year plan. With that, we do have city planning staff and some members of our planning commission here who can please stand and be recognized. And with that, it's our request that the city council accept this reward.
Well, we'll accept the award. I don't think it's a formal agenda item, but we'll accept it. But I've already made some comments to the staff and to the commissioners and so forth. So I'll make it brief. Just thank you for what you do. And as I said before, you guys are the first line of defense. And we can't thank you enough. So appreciate you, thank you to the staff, thank you to y'all. Kyle, thank you. So good job. All right. P one.
Cameron. Mayor and Council. Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for the city of Tyler. We're here to present to you on the South Tyler Mobility Study. South Tyler experiences our highest traffic congestion in the city, and specifically from Grande Boulevard to just south of toll forty-nine, and then looking at from Paloxi kind of over to Old Jacksonville. And that's the study area, and those are the areas. There are large tracts of land that are still undeveloped in that area, or they're in the process of being developed. And we conducted this study to look at that future growth, the future roadways that are in that area, and provide us a roadmap of solutions that we can use to help aid us in our decision-making as we move forward with and guide these projects, as opposed to trying to piecemeal things together as they happen. And so have HDR with us today. They were the consultant that worked on this study. Leslie Pollak was the project manager. So I'm going to turn it over to her to give you an overview of the study, present those results, those recommendations, and then we'll have it at the time at the end to answer any questions that may happen. So with that, turn it over to Leslie.
Thank you, Cameron. I appreciate it. All right, good morning. So starting out this study, we established some goals for the analysis. The biggest goal was to improve mobility and decrease congestion in South Tyler. And we found that a lot of that congestion was because of reliance on Broadway Avenue as a primary north-south route through the area. We also wanted to make sure we planned for future developments and growth in traffic that would occur in South Tyler and accommodate pedestrians and cyclists through the area. We have four main tasks that we completed for the study. The first one was looking at short and midterm improvements. Second, we looked at cross-access and connectivity along Broadway Avenue itself. We evaluated some future roadway alignments and assessed those alternatives. And then we conducted the beginning of stakeholder outreach. First up was short and midterm improvements. So along the corridor, we looked at five key locations along the Broadway Avenue corridor. We looked at Broadway with Grande, South Town, Heritage, Cumberland, and Centennial Parkway. And at each one of these intersections, we looked at short-term improvements, things that can be done in the first, in the next five years to really improve mobility in the study area. This example that's shown on the screen is Grande Avenue. And you can see in the gray, we're adding left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes on Grande itself. And by doing that, we're able to optimize signal timing and provide more time on the corridor to Broadway Avenue. So it improves delays on both Grande and Broadway by making those improvements on the cross-street. The improvements at each of those five intersections were similar. A lot of it was cross-street improvements to help progress traffic on Broadway more efficiently. Overall, average of the intersections, we looked at a sixteen percent improvement in delay. And that was annual savings of six hundred thousand. And you can recoup your investment on these short and midterm improvements within seven years. All right, next up was cross-access and connectivity. This also focused on Broadway Avenue. And as you know, Broadway Avenue has a lot of commercial developments with single accesses on Broadway, single access points on Broadway. It's difficult to connect between retail on the backside. A lot of times vehicles are making trips on and off of Broadway to get between commercial developments. So we looked between Grande in the north and Cumberland on the south, if we could provide connectivity on the backside of the developments, if there is anywhere in the middle of the developments to connect between them. And by doing so, help eliminate some of the access points on Broadway Avenue. We found that the access points on Broadway Avenue not only lead to congestion, but a lot of crashes along the corridor. And you can see our example here is Sword Waldy, which aligns with Robert E. Lee. In this particular example, we're showing removal of two driveways. And one of the driveways is being relocated. And because we're relocating the driveway, we're able to provide a turn lane on Broadway Avenue. And that right turn lane improves mobility. It improves safety at the intersection. And we recommended similar improvements all along the corridor. With the driveway consolidation and reduction, we are looking at a crash reduction of thirty-one percent on the corridor, which is equivalent to an annual savings of two million dollars. And you can recoup your investment on that cost in under three years. Next, we looked at the long-term roadway improvements. These are roadway alignments and new roadways that would go in over the ten-plus-year period. We evaluated the impact of these roadways on existing and future traffic conditions, looked at the feasibility of construction and feasibility of alignments, and then prioritized these improvements based on a variety of factors. This map shows the master street plan that is currently adopted. We use this as the basis for our study. And really, the master's street plan aligns and future roadway alignments. It defines future roadway alignments in South Tyler and plans for where these roadways are going to go and how big they are as South Tyler continues to grow, so that it can accommodate that future growth. So starting with these alignments, we looked at a few alternatives for each road based on placement and connectivity. We also turned on and off roadways to determine the impact of individual routes. In total, we looked at twelve scenarios. And from those twelve scenarios, we were able to prioritize transportation improvements. Here's the prioritization methodology that we used. One of our primary goals was improving mobility and traffic operations. So sixty percent of our criteria was traffic operations. But we also looked at environmental constraints, stakeholder impacts, the benefit-cost analysis of each one of these roadways, connectivity, and active transportation. And using these criteria, we prioritized each of the routes in alignments. So here's the results of that analysis. This is our final recommendation and roadway ranking. So street number one is the Waldem Street Connector. And the Waldem Street Connector, you can see, is the tiny piece of Waldem between South Town and Fig Pin. That particular roadway was ranked the highest in the corridor. It had the most significant impact on mobility in the South Tyler area. And that's because it provided that connection from Grande to Cumberland through Waldem Street North, the connector, existing Waldem Street and Waldem Street South. And that full connection there provided a lot of relief to Broadway Avenue. Looking at the roadway ranking, I do want to point out Cherry Hill and Holly Tree on the west side. That's a good example. Those roadways were ranked lower in our scoring. They still do improve mobility in the area and notably improve emergency response times to that western part of the South Tyler region. But they had a less significant overall impact on delay in the network. Here's some of the significant findings that we've found. Waldem Street Connector, that small piece, just that piece alone, reduced delay seven percent network-wide. So not just on Waldem, but through the entire South Tyler network. It resulted in one point two million in delay savings. New Copeland Road, the extension of New Copeland Road, also has a significant impact, resulting in thirty percent decrease in delay throughout the entire network. And a lot of that is because of the growth and development that's going to occur on the New Copeland Road area. And that is a seven point eight million dollar in delay savings annually. The last bucket in our task was stakeholder engagement. We did stakeholder engagement as part of this process. We started with one-on-one meetings with property owners, and these were property owners directly impacted by the alignments recommended in the plan. We also had working meetings with developers, particularly developers through which the alignment goes through their property. And we're continuing conversations with Tech Dot. Tech Dot has plans for Broadway Avenue and aligning our recommendations there with Tech Dot's recommendations. We did present a council working session, and we're here today. And we're recommending moving forward with an open house, so we can get feedback from the public as a whole on the results of this study, and recommending establishment of a business owner group. A lot of the improvements on the cross-access and connectivity are reliant on business owners and are on private properties. So we really need their buy-in and support and understanding of how that impacts Broadway. All right, so overall, the study results. Through each one of these aspects, not a singular one, not implementation of short-term or midterm or long-term, but all of them collectively together, we're able to improve connectivity in the area, reduce emergency vehicle response times, reduce delays, reduce delays on Broadway Avenue, notably that bottleneck we see, provide alternate routes to Broadway, and improve safety and reduce crashes on Broadway Avenue. So our recommendations are to move forward with short and midterm improvements through PSE, PSD, and constructing those improvements. Continue coordination with developers. So as they come forward with their development plans, they accommodate the proposed roadways, and they accommodate the proposed roadways in a way that not only works for the developers, but works for mobility in South Tyler. Preserve the right-of-way we need for those future roadway alignments. Develop preliminary engineering. Do preliminary engineering reports on each one of the future ten-plus-year alignments. And continue engagement on the plan through the open house, through development of a business owner group to really get that buy-in for the mobility improvements. Cam?
Few closing thoughts before questions. South Tyler's congestion did not happen overnight. It's happened over time. And it's not going to be fixed overnight. It's going to take time. The study helped us quantify those and identify and prioritize things that we can do moving forward. And some of these will be city-led. We have to take the initiative. As you know, we every year do our annual work plan for our capital improvement program through the half-cent sales tax. So we already have some of those short-term program projects put into that tier-one category. So specifically, South Broadway and South Town improvements, Broadway and Grande improvements. Those are in that kind of two-to-three-to-five-year timeframe that's currently out for comment for people to look at at this time. So those are things that are going to be city-led, that we can prioritize to move forward. But many of these will be partnerships with existing developments and future developments. And some will be developer-led, because the big parts of that are undeveloped tracks. But we must have buy-in to move these things forward, or we're not going to make any improvements. It's just going to continue to be what it is and get worse. So hopefully, with the support and the focus and investment, you know, we can make, take these recommendations and facilitate improved mobility there in South Tyler as we continue to grow, which is going to happen. And so we're trying to do our best to put a plan forward to address that. So with that, see what questions y'all may have.
All right, any questions or comments for Leslie or Cameron?
Yeah, Leslie, Cameron, when y'all were meeting with the stakeholders along Broadway, and the one picture you showed were your elimination of curb cuts and adding, what was the input or the thoughts from the various businesses?
Sure, so speak specifically to, as far as access management. That has been one piece that we haven't done as much engagement on at this point. That kind of gets to those future steps. Hey, we got ideas. These are things that are definitely going to help. That business owners group, that's going to be kind of the next step from a staff perspective of moving that forward. The stakeholder engagement that we really did was mostly on those new alignments of roadways, was the focus of those impacted property owners.
Anyone else? Well, I think the study is needed. I think we all agree, I think everybody agrees that, you know, one of the options you said was continue to be what it is. And that's not an option. And I think everybody that uses Broadway would say, you can't widen Broadway. It is what it is. But we can do other things. And so thank you to you and Leslie and Jacob for forgiving some options to make it, to give us relief. Everybody wants relief on Broadway. So thank you for what y'all are doing, and thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely, thank y'all.
All right, M one, Steve?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution that's being presented to the council this morning. This is similar to what the council did last year. It's your casting of votes and nominations for a member of the Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors. The Smith County Appraisal District is made up of nine total members. The law has changed over time. But five members are appointed by the taxing units, including City of Tyler. Three members are elected at large in a general election, which the first one was held last year. And then the ninth member is the elected tax assessor collector, is the ex officio member. As stated the last time, each taxing unit has a number of votes based on its total tax levy, its percentage. For the city of Tyler, that calculates to be seventy-six total votes. The city may cast all of its votes for one person, as it did last time, or you can break them up and nominate different persons. So being presented to you this morning is a resolution that does what the council did last time, which is to nominate Mark Watley, who's the current city representative, to serve a new four-year term, nominating him for the Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors, and casting all seventy-six votes for him. However, you as council have an option to do something different. But that's the recommendation from staff this morning.
And as an additional piece of this one, because it always gets a little confusing with the way sometimes this keeps changing. So you're doing your nomination today, and then you'll be voting for the board of directors, probably at your December meeting. So you'll have that slate that comes back from all of the different taxing entities on the board, essentially the board nominees from all jurisdictions, and then casting your votes for that as well.
So there are no other nominees?
You can always nominate other people as well. The situation is, you know, when you look at the number of votes that you have, which is seventy-six, you're also needing to figure out, how do you leverage that in relationship to the other taxing entities? Because they also will be casting their votes. And so you have Tyler ISD that has two hundred ninety-three votes, Smith County with two hundred forty-six votes, those types. County yesterday put forward their nominees. They put forward Mark Watley and James Sheridan as their nominees. It is one we expect to see similar support for our candidate and for some of those that have been there before or the like from Tyler ISD Board and from the TJC, who also has votes towards this as well.
So if you split the votes between two people, you're actually diluting Mark. And he's been on there for a long, a long time and knows what he's doing.
That is, that is correct, yeah. Any splits in that or essentially nominations that you don't know if will get the support of the other entities, then have difficulty kind of probably making, getting over that hurdle.
So this is a two-step process. What's the motion for the first step?
Today's motion is essentially just as the caption reads, is a resolution, adoption of a resolution, casting your votes to elect blank person or people to serve as members of Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And that will be, that will get them on the nomination piece.
All right, any questions for Steve or for Ed on this? All right. Oh, sure, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mark Watley to represent the city of Tyler on the Smith County Appraisal District Board. Second.
All right, got a motion by Nichols, seconded by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All seventy-six votes for?
Yes, I'm sorry. All seventy-six votes from all six of us.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. We're down to the consent agenda. Does this even deeply pulled or approved as written?
Move to approve. The consent agenda is written.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
All right. So Mayor and Council, a few items to note. There's quite a bit of construction going on that the city's involved with. The first one, the police training facility. We're continuing to see substantial progress at the training facility as far as updates that we're doing over there. Construction crews are currently working on paint preparation, exterior wall preparation, the new roof, and electrical work, and HVAC installation. If you get a chance to drive by there, it's actually quite remarkable, as they're starting now, put on kind of the new extended wall up at the front. And so that's looking really good. The IT building renovation, the renovations for the new information technology department building are moving forward. Those renovations include relocating equipment to lighten the load on the third floor of City Hall. Projected completion date for the new building is set for April of 2026. And that's for the facility that's right over here on Locust Street, about three blocks east of City Hall here. On the Stewart Park project. Back in January, we held a public meeting requesting feedback for the project. Part of the conceptual design at that time included salvaging as much of the existing stone home structure as possible, and exploring the viability of making it an open-air pavilion. In February, we met with a forensic structural engineer, and based on the findings, the stone and wooden structure were not structurally sound enough to meet the standards required by the International Building Code and ADA requirements. Unfortunately, this means the plans needed to be altered based on the engineering recommendations to ensure safety and accessibility for park visitors. Demolition has begun, and we will salvage as much of the existing stone that we can to utilize in the park design. We'll also be adding a beautiful bronze plaque to ensure that we are honoring both the Stewart home and the Stewart family for their incredible contributions to the City of Tyler and beyond. And then, beginning on October 15th, our Polish sister city delegation will begin their visit. We'll be hosting a six-person delegation from sister city in Poland called Hellenia Gora. The delegation will have six full days here in Tyler, and to be able to experience this community. The general focus of each day will be day one will be local government. This day two will be Rose Garden. Day three, UT Tyler. The day four, Rose Festival. Day five, Parks Tour in the Caldwell Zoo. And day six will be TJC, Christus, and the UT School of Medicine. On that October 15th, that Wednesday, so next week, they'll be dropped off here at 9:00, and we'll have as many of our employees out as far as waving flags and cheering them on as they come in to meet the mayor and any of the council that may be wanting to attend. And do your best Polish, as far as with...
Easy.
Hey, not Polish jokes. I know, you know, saying you're having jokes and reciting them. So don't, don't even think about it. And then, last night, incredible time throughout the city was had with National Night Out. We appreciate the mayor and council for their support of National Night Out. The police department, the pro-unit does great work in putting that together. And fun was had by all. There are videos of as far as the bucking bull, which was not, thankfully, a real one. But some of our officers did try to ride it, and they did a bet. So I think they got eight seconds. And so, but we appreciate the council's support of that, and we appreciate the work the police department does in putting that event together.
All right. Any comments?
Yeah, I do. Not on that. Can we go back to M1 just right quickly for clarification? Because Ed said December is when we actually vote, not today, right? So I think we kind of did a vote today. We just, we did a nomination, but we're...
So, yes, in looking at the resolution, it does call for both the nomination of the candidate, as well as the number of votes that the city is going to apply to that candidate. So if you wanted another candidate, you need to do it today and then apply those votes.
No, I wasn't trying, that wasn't, there's no objection to him. I was just trying to get clarity on...
What we needed to do.
Yeah. Because we have a nominee, but we're not actually voting today, right? Just for the number of votes. And, okay, I just want to clarify.
Well, let's make sure, yeah, because it is such a weird process that the state's creating on this. And so, yeah, you will be casting your votes in December for the final, essentially the final board. But you also have to cast your nomination today.
Right. Okay.
Not certain, do they need to cast, yeah, the votes that they're having towards the nominee, so that they kind of face up or try to determine who will be, end up as the nominee?
Not clear on the nominee is just if we're voting today.
And the way that, yeah, that Councilman Nichols phrased his motion on the nomination place, actually was, was clear that you are doing your nomination. You also cast your votes towards it. I don't think it's going to have, that will have any, there will be any adverse impact on that. The question is, is that the way or not? I'm not sure. Deborah, do you even have a, do you have a?
Yeah. Based on the past resolution, and we were going off of this one, we had both the candidate's name plus the number of votes. But if there's not, if there's actual voting in December, we might be...
Yeah. You'll still have your votes in December. It's not like you gave them away.
But the vote's going to be on the final slate from all taxing entities, what that vote is in December.
Yes, for that board.
Thank you.
There's hope for two and a half years. I finally got a motion.
Anyway, back to what I was talking about with the Polish delegation coming. It's something that our Tyler Sister Cities Board has worked on a lot over the last couple of months. And it, having, you know, entertaining these folks for six days from morning till night is a big deal. And, you know, when we've gone to other sister cities, we've taken gifts, and there's been a formal gift exchange. And it's always a formal diplomatic, it's the mayors get together and we exchange gifts, and it's always a formality. So any of y'all that are around next Wednesday morning at 9:00, want to be here, we have Polish flags, we have American flags to hold as they walk through the halls, and make it a real celebration. And Cassie Edmonds has done a mosaic rose that's just eight by 10. And this is a gift that will be from the City of Tyler to Hellenia Gora, that they will take home and put in a display case. And it's much more than just a paperweight. It's a symbol of the City of Tyler. So any of y'all that are around 9:00 next Wednesday, we'd love to have you. So, all that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right. We're adjourned.